Good afternoon, everyone. Today is August 22, 2023. It's 3:00 PM. This is a City of Prescott voting meeting. So I'll call this to order and I'll ask our Mayor Protam whether he has any introductions or announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few announcements. For those of you out there, this is a reminder that I will keep announcing until we get to August 30th that the city is having a -- we are in the process of working on our 2020-25 general plan, and you are all invited to the open house about the general plan and Presket -- our preservation master -- historic preservation master plan that is on Wednesday, August 30th from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at the Raleigh P. Simmons Adult Center, which is located at 1280 East Rossar Street. City staff will have information and will answer questions. Come to learn more about the general plan and give your input about Prescott's next 10 years. If you aren't able to make it or you're looking to find out more information, you can also go to planprescott.com. Next, we want to mention the State Route 89, or SR 89 roadway, and infrastructure improvements project is in the early planning stages. This project includes infrastructure improvements along SR 89 between the Fippen Roundabout and the Willow Lake Roundabout with potential of additional roadway improvements. The city is interested in community feedback on this project, and accordingly, we remind all the folks that are providing feedback that there is no formal design in place for this project at the moment. It is a conceptual layout that has been produced to illustrate potential roadway improvements that are being considered. If you're interested in learning more about the project or in taking a survey to provide your feedback, you can go to www.sr89improvements.com. We will also be hosting a community open house meeting to discuss this project in greater detail, and that will be on Wednesday, October 4th, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM at the Adult Center, the Raleigh P. Simmons Adult Center as well, which is still located at 1280 East Rossar Street. To receive further information, e-newsletter project updates, email a request to news@sr89improvements.com. And I would encourage everyone to go to that SR 89 website. There is a virtual meeting room. There's a lot of really cool videos that kind of walk you through the road and potential mapping on that as well. And lastly, this is my favorite reminder. If you are a City of Prescott residential trash customer, we'll be coming to your home to pick up your large household items that do not fit in your regular trash bins. As we call it in my house, "Big Trash Day" is coming. So we will begin making our way through the neighborhoods, starting on Monday, August 28th. Remember to bag, box, bundle, or tie your items and put them out by 6:00 AM on the Monday of your designated week, and I would recommend maybe even considering doing it the weekend over before that Monday, just a pro tip. To find your week for this special event or view a list of acceptable items, visit the website, preskitrecycles.com, and you can find out all the information and when your date is coming. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and I want to reemphasize the request for public input on these surveys. You know, we had a survey out there for redevelopment of the City Hall, and we take the public input very seriously. So when we're talking about the widening of 89 through the Narrows, please contribute your concerns so that we can take those in under consideration when we make our decisions on how, when, or if we do that 89 widening through the Granite Dells Narrows in that area. And I don't think -- I think Chief Bonney has left, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge her 25 years of service to the Prescott Police Department. So Lieutenant Small and Sergeant Scott, if you can extend my congratulations and appreciation to the chief. That's quite a milestone for our community. So thank you, Chief Bonney. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Dan Hurlberg from the Prescott United Methodist Church, followed by a pledge of allegiance by Mayor Protam Montoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I want to thank you for your work today. I've sat through the study session. I just want to say thanks. And Mayor Protam Montoya curfews when you say it is. That's -- you may quote me on that. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Let us pray. "Gracious and ever-living God, there is no place where we can flee from Your presence. Wherever we go, You are there, and that includes this very room. We give You thanks for Your presence with us and for calling us to this the work of Your city. Today we give You thanks for the moisture in our town and Your forests. We rejoice along with the plants and animals. We pray for those who have suffered damage from the storms here and in other places. Give them comfort and speed aid to their locations. We pray for our servicemen and women, especially those in harm's way, and we pray to You for peace in all the world. Now guide these Your servants to do Your will for this Your city. In Your name we pray. Amen."
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our very flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think now we'll have roll call, please.
We will, Mayor. Thank you. Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Kentelme.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenny.
Yes.
All are present.
We now have a couple of proclamations, starting by the International Day of Peace by Councilmember Rusing.
Whoops. Would you please come up? Thank you. Okay, just line up. Yeah, thank you. Proclamation, International Day of Peace, September 21, 2023. Whereas the issue of peace embraces the deepest hopes of all peoples and remains humanity's guiding inspiration, and whereas the United Nations expanded the observance of the International Day of Peace in 2001 to include the call for a day of global ceasefire and nonviolence, and invited all nations and peoples to honor a cessation of hostilities for the duration of the day, and whereas there is growing support within our city for the observance of the International Day of Peace, which affirms a vision of our world at peace and fosters cooperation between individuals, organizations, nations, and whereas global crises compel all citizens to work towards converting humanity's noblest aspirations for world peace into the practical reality of a culture of peace for future generations. Now, therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim September 21, 2023, as International Day of Peace throughout the City of Prescott and urges its commemoration by individuals, organizations, and places of worship and schools. Does anyone want to say something? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rusing. I'm Leslie Grady on the steering committee with the Prescott Peace Builders. Actually, our mission is to inspire our community to believe in and work toward a more peaceful, sustainable world. This year, the United Nation theme is activism. Every year, there's a different theme, and I think it's important for us to all realize that each one of us in some way can make a contribution to make positive changes, to make our world and our community a better place to be. I want to let you know that this year, we have three wonderful events during Peace Week. The first one on the 17th is a film documentary called Gabby Gifford Won't Back Down. That will be at the library. There'll be a lot of information for you to find out more. On the 21st, of course, is International Day of Peace, and that is at the courthouse area on the girly side. We'll have music and speakers and candlelight. It's just a very touching, lovely event. And for the first time, and I'm real excited about this, on Sunday, the 24th, at the Granite Park, we, the Peace Builders, are having a Concert for Peace. It is going to be starting at 1:30 with six great local musical bands and groups. You can bring your blanket, your chairs. It's going to be filled with love, joy, and peace. Finally, we've made these lovely cards that say Ways of Being a Peace Builder, and we have one for each of the council members that maybe Sarah could pass down the line. But I'd just like to read a few of them. Ways of being a Peace Builder: Be Kind. Be Happy. Be Grateful. Create Beauty. Build Community. Love Your Neighbor. And there's more. But it's nice to have this displayed in a place in your home where you're reminded every single day of what we should try to strive for. So thank you all, and hope to see you the week of September 17th for International Day of Peace Week.
Okay, here's the proclamation, and I believe we have a photo op here. If everyone wants to get in front of the podium. Should we all get over here? Get me confused.
Just crowd that podium up. Okay. Thank you. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
We'll now have a proclamation on Fall's Prevention Month, presented by Councilman Tenny.
My understanding that the representative for this proclamation is not able to be with us, is that correct? I didn't want to leave anybody out. Okay? Fair enough. Good. Mayor asked me to go over this. I gave him some pushback initially, saying, you know, "Fall's going to come September 23rd, whether we try to prevent it or not." But then it turns out, it's really about an entirely different subject. So here we go. Whereas slips and falls impact all ages in Arizona, resulting in personal and financial tolls that fall injuries exact on those Arizonans 65-plus and the healthcare systems, and whereas it is estimated that one-fourth of people age 65 and older will fall each year, and whereas falls can lead to depression, loss of mobility, and loss of functional independence, and whereas Yavapai County ranks fifth in age-adjusted -- here's a data bite for you -- fifth in age-adjusted unintentional fall rate of hospitalizations by county in Arizona. Very specific. And whereas the total cost, excluding costs associated with physician care, EMS services, rehabilitation, or long-term disability for unintentional falls exceeded $3 billion, and whereas falling is not an inevitable result of aging, and whereas older Arizonans at risk of falling need fall prevention programs that can teach them specific everyday strategies to improve mobility and stability and reduce fall risks. Now, therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, does hereby proclaim September as Falls Prevention Awareness Month, and urge all older adults, family members and caregivers, fire, law enforcement, healthcare providers, and community partners to join in support of the Northern Regional Chapter of the Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition, and routinely assess older adults, including our veterans and those with disabilities, for fall risks and strategies to improve mobility and stability to reduce fall risks. And I believe we'll be sending this proclamation by email to the representatives of the organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny. I'll now move to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the open call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total, with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussions on this topic, and topics that are primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor as well. I do have one comment card from Sam Boils.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. On Thursdays, like I told you last night, we pray for you at our church, Prescott Life Church. We have ancestral prayer every Thursday morning at 10 o'clock. We pray for all of you to make the right decisions. What I was going to talk about today is illegal people coming across the border. Does this -- do you have a plan if we have a bunch of them sent up to us from our governor? Because she doesn't seem to be doing any kind of control. Do we have a plan for money, to send them, put them on a bus and send them to New York? We had $105 million coming to us to work on the border, and Chuck, the guy, Senate, and the man and the rest of them up in Washington, DC decided to give that money into New York because they're having a crisis with all the immigrants coming up there. So I kind of thought, if you, Mr. Mayor, got together with a bunch of other mayors and put a petition together to the governor and ask why she didn't ask for that money. The money was given to us, it was never took, $105 million. And actually, one of our senators brought it up and found out that New York got the money. They were supposed to go to help fight the border, help on the border. So I just wondered if, you know, I, you know, I spoke here, I spoke about what God likes and doesn't like from reading the Bible. God loves every person, he just hates their sin. God doesn't hate these people coming across the border, no more than they hate any homosexuals or murderers. God hates the sin, that's all. And I've been, I had a business 35 years. I've been to every state at least twice. I've been to 40 countries, and I've seen bad places down in Central and South America that you wouldn't believe that people could live that way. I was in Rio, as you know, and my business, I built printing presses for newspapers, and I had a factory, and I owned it. And that's why I traveled all over the world selling presses and selling parts. And the man who owned the paper, down in one of the papers, they always had bodyguards with them, because when they have a revolution, first thing that goes is newspapers. They put around them what they want to say. So, and you go see somebody like that, they always have bodyguards, machine guns and stuff. Well, he took me up in his helicopter. We're flying over the beaches of Amfoe Feneema, I think is what it was called. We flew over the Statue of Jesus. We flew out about two or three miles, and there's a great big pipe underground putting raw sewer out. I was in the Philippines. You're going to see one of the richest men in the world, that name was Chairman Yap, owned the bank there and the newspaper, and I sold him two presses. On the way over, we stopped and dropped this bridge, and the river that goes through Manila was there. And he always picked me up in a bulletproof car, because, you know, Americans get kidnapped. I'd look off to my left, and I see raw sewer running in the river. I looked off to my right, about 100 yards down, there's kids swimming in, and women with pots and pans washing it out. So all those things I'd seen, I, story after story, things they could tell. I was in El Salvador, eight months after the war ended, and we had bulletproof cars and machine guns guarding us, and just, it's sad. And I'm so thankful to live in a place like Prescott. I sure don't want things like that to creep in, because things creep in. You know, a drug addict doesn't get up in the mornings, "I'm going to shoot you up this morning," and come heroin act. It creeps in, is what sin does, and little things creep in, and we blow them off. But after a while, it gets stronger and stronger, then it's hard to blow it off, hard to get rid of it. So that's why I tell you, we're praying for you, and we are every Thursday morning.
That's all, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to pull anything from the consent agenda items?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item D.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item 9A.
And Mayor?
There's items eight.
I would like to pull 8B.
8B.
As in boy.
And what was yours?
D.
8D, 8B, and 8D. All right, very well. I'll entertain a motion on it.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items A through K minus A, B, and D.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Can I ask a clarification question? Councilperson Rusing asked for 9A, which would be later to be pulled off the consent ordinance. Is that the intent, or did you mean to pull 8A, which is?
No, I meant 9A. It's a -- okay.
Then Councilman Moore, you might want to rephrase your motion.
Yeah, not --
Gotcha. Well, it was Councilman Moore's motion, so we're going to need to rephrase that.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny, for pointing that out. I would like to restate my agenda, per my motion to accept consent agenda items 8A through K minus B and D.
Second. All right. Now we have a motion in the second. Please vote. All right. It's just coming right along, isn't it? Okay, so we'll move to item 8. D, I think yours is the first one. Okay, we can do B.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to pull 8B, basically just to thank Michelle Burchell and all the people down at the election office. I know they worked very hard. I was very impressed how they got the numbers out early, and I wanted to thank her for all of her hard work and her staff. It's a very thankless job, as we all know. The second reason was also, I wanted to thank the 15,148 voters that participated this year, even though we had 34,809 registered voters in our county. So thank you all for voting, and thank you for doing your due diligence. Just remember, this is how we speak, so make sure you stand up and be counted. Thank you.
So just to clarify, that's 34,809 voters in our city.
That's correct.
We have a lot more in the county, but I agree with you. I think the fact that we only had a 43.5% voter turnout for the election is a little bit disappointing. So I'll have to just, in my opinion, if you don't vote, you really don't have the justification to complain about anything. But regardless, I appreciate the results of the canvas, and we're looking forward to a new group of council members officially at our second meeting in November. Any other comments or concerns? I'll entertain a mo --
Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda item 8B.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Please vote. All right. We'll move on to item eight.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is actually, I think, very good news, good story and good news. It represents how the city employs some sustainable practices and looks for ways to create more efficient use of some of the materials that we receive, some of the inert materials such as rock, concrete, bricks, blocks, and dirt. This is for a contract to do some milling of the inert material that we have, and I have Janet here to talk a little bit about this contract and about how it benefits the city.
Yeah, thank you. I agree. This is a, this is a good thing. There are actually three Rs of recycling. Reduce, only purchase and get the things that you actually can use. Reuse, find a second life for that thing. And then recycle, and finally, to the landfill. So this is one of those first two options, which are the better options in all cases. We are presenting for your consideration a contract with Earth Resources Corporation for purposes of crushing about 5,000 tons of inert debris, which is rock, concrete, and asphalt that was delivered to the transfer station for disposal at a reduced rate. That crushed debris is then reused for a number of purposes. Most importantly, it stays out of the landfill. To give a perspective of about 5,000 tons, that's about 60 Boeing 737s, and I know that to be true because it was on the internet. So if you have any specific questions about the use or the process, I have with me my entourage. I always bring Brady Higgs, the superintendent of solid waste, and Brian Scott, superintendent of street maintenance, as well. So if there are any other questions that we could answer for you?
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm totally in favor of reusing this material. The reason I pulled it from the agenda is not because I'm not in favor of this, it's to raise a concern that I've had shared with me both in emails and in pictures from constituents. The facility where this process will occur is adjacent to the most frequently used, highest use recreation area in the City of Prescott, the Peavine Trail. And I've had constituents email me pictures of just clouds of dust coming over the trail during the day when they're doing the chipping operation, and they're not using enough water to abate the dust and the noise. And that's really the only reason I wanted to bring this up, is that I think it's unfortunate that we have these two facilities co-located adjacent to one another. I wish that we could have this operation somewhere other than where it is, adjacent to the most highly-used public trail in the City of Prescott, where people are walking for exercise and enjoyment, and they're having to breathe in debris and dust from, whether it's a chipping operation or pulverizing operation or crushing operation, it just doesn't make a lot of sense, and then the noise combined with that. So that's the only reason I'm bringing it up, is I'm not opposed to what you're doing, it's just the location and the process and the dust and noise that it creates for recreation users.
Understood, Mayor and Council. So Brady can talk to this just a little bit, but we do take some mitigation measures to try to control the dust, and again, the inert debris is in a slightly different location. So unfortunately, the chipping operation was closer, and we installed the fence and have done some other mitigations there. But this is slightly different. So Brady, if you could address that just a little bit?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, Brady Higgs, Solid Waste Superintendent. So the inert debris and the milling pile that we're going to be crushing for this contract is located more in the center of our yard. I don't know if any of you guys have dumped off there, but it's where our garbage trucks kind of park overnight, just right behind that, still in the footprint of the facility. This is probably the third time that we've crushed since me being there. They do do a good job of hooking up a water source, potable water, to be able to water that pile. To your point with chipping and just kind of having both operations there and having the trail there, we're trying to do the best we can. I know we got some plans hopefully coming up over the next three fiscal years to make some small changes in that yard that we really hope will benefit the trail users as well as our customers that come in there.
And Brady, about how long do we expect the chipping, this crushing operation to go?
So the contract is expected to be completed within 90 days. So if awarded today, I would expect a notice to proceed probably within the coming weeks, a pre-con meeting. I would guess that it would, timing-wise, it'd probably be tail end of September by the time they get some of their equipment in, and then 90 days. I know last time they did it, there was a couple weather days that kind of pushed it out a little bit longer, but hopefully we're timing it well that we'll have a dry spell and we won't have to push for a whole bunch of weather days.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification question for me, as I read the memo, and now I'm looking at the bid, the price sheet from the contract. I'm seeing 5,000 tons, as you mentioned, on the council memo, but the bid looks like it's for 26,000 tons at a different rate. Can you help me out there?
Yeah, so on the, on the 5,000 tons, so that's typically what the transfer station accepts yearly. So that 5,000 tons and that $330,000 savings is each fiscal year. So we pay, you know, $17 a ton to put it in a truck and haul it to the landfill, and we pay $45 a ton to dispose of it there. So that $330,000 savings is for each fiscal year, but the estimated quantities on the price sheet is what's actively in the yard. So there's 12,000 -- So, there's 12,000 tons of inert debris and 14,000 tons of millings.
Got it. So, this would be a multi-year contract that we'd be looking at 5,000 tons per year of that being milled? Is that...
I understand, and maybe in the memo, it was worded wrong. The 5,000 tons is just what we take annually, and that's annual savings. But this contract will be to crush the entirety of the pile there.
Thank you. I apologize for my confusion.
No problem.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question about the asphalt millings. Are those repurposed and reused for more asphalt roads, or what do we do with them?
Mayor, Council, Brian Scott, Street Maintenance Superintendent. That pile is primarily made up of concrete and asphalt rubble that street maintenance brings in from doing projects such as utility cut patches, things like that, repairs all over the city. There's also a considerable amount of that that comes from CIPs around the city that we take in and then crush. Yes, it will be, to answer your question directly, yes, it will be repurposed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I imagine you're probably going to use that for fill material primarily, wouldn't you?
Yeah, Mayor, yes, that is correct. In fact, in this case, a lot of, especially the concrete millings, because it meets a better gradation standard as far as mag specs go, we anticipate using a lot of that material, the crushed concrete, underneath the structure that will be our future admin building that we'll be bringing forth to council in the next coming weeks. So, it will be, it will be utilized for that structure.
That's even better.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, a lot of the millings will be used outside of that structural footprint, if you will, for the off-site stuff around there. We anticipate using quite a bit of it there.
Very good. Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you, sir.
Any other further questions or concerns? And I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda item 8D.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, now we can move to a consent ordinance 9A.
Thank you, Mayor. Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1837 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement agreement from Chamberlain Development Prescott LLC and James Deepwell Ranch's Number One LLC, authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
Thank you, Mayor. I have our Public Works Director, Gwen Roach, here, and she is going to provide a little bit of an overview on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This one is pretty straightforward. In the map on the screen there, you can see the red line. That's the location of a new sewer main that's already been constructed in the Deepwell Ranch area as part of their development. Because it is not located within a public right-of-way, they're required to dedicate an easement to the city. It's 20 feet in width, and it runs parallel to the red line that you see there on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. It's a routine part of new development.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Gwen, the thing that caught my eye was the location. I had no idea that this, the sewer has already been constructed.
Yes, Councilperson Rusing, it's already been constructed.
Did the developers construct that?
Yes.
And why wasn't, why wasn't it in the right-of-way along Willow Creek? Why does it just kind of veer off into the middle of this area here?
I didn't review the engineering, so I can't speak to that directly, but it's not uncommon for utilities to not always be placed in the right-of-way. It's really not that uncommon. I believe it's for the future alignment of the future general lane, but I can't say that for certain.
Okay. And then, it looks like it's approximately 1,750 feet. And I was curious, you know, it looks like it goes into our, a future area where we plan on acquiring from the developer in order to protect our airport and our OEI one-engine impact zone. Do you anticipate this to be causing any problems because the developer won't be owning that land any further, any longer?
So, what I can speak to is, if the city were to acquire that land, then the easement would be essentially null because you can't have an easement over a piece of property that you own that's an easement that entitles you to that, whatever's being granted through the easement. So, but at this time, the property is not owned by the city, and in order for the developer to close out the extension of this sewer main, they need to grant us an easement.
And where does this easement, this sewer go? Because it looks like it just stops in the middle of a vacant parcel. I mean, what's going to, where's it hook, hook up to? I'm sorry. It's a strange map. I don't see a legal, I don't see an actual plaque.
So, most of our sewer is gravity main. This main will gravity to the north. It does not need to extend to the south necessarily, because it will gravity to the north.
So, it's going north?
It's connecting to another sewer main that already exists within the development, and it will gravity feed to the north.
So, is it, is it going to feed, is it going to serve South Ranch? Because that's a...
That is my assumption. That is the area that's been identified for South Ranch. Whether or not that will be developed or not remains to be seen. That hasn't come before the council yet. But this sewer, it's not uncommon for the infrastructure to be placed in advance of a project being built.
Well, so, I'm just trying to answer some questions here. So, you're thinking that maybe there's going to be a housing development there, even though it's going to be in an area that we're supposed to acquire from the developer in order to protect the airport? Is that, is that what we're talking about here?
And I can touch on a little bit of that. There has been a preliminary plot approved to the west of that line. And I would assume, regardless of what happens, that part has been approved. Regardless of there's any acquisitions, that part will still have some housing. And so, this will serve as that portion, that portion.
And as I said, Councilperson Rusing, it feeds to the north. So, any development south of here will likely connect to this main ultimately. So, there'll be additional development south of here that will connect to this main and will feed sewer to the north. It will continue along that route. But generally, they only build what they need at the time that they construct it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt consent ordinance 9A.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Please vote.
Passes six one.
All right, we'll move to item 10A.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Ian Benjamin Burns, applicant for Brown Bag Burger, location 130 West Gurley Street, number A. The license fees have been paid, and the notice has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has not received any public comment on the liquor license at this time.
Very good. Is the applicant present?
Mayor, real quick, I also want to just mention that the second item, the next item, the item 10B, is also the same applicant, so you might want to consider both of them. And I don't believe the applicant is...
He's not present?
Present.
Well, from my understanding, this is a reoccupation of the Prescott Brewing Company facility in Bashford Courts. So, not only will they have a spirits license to serve the public, but they're also regenerating the microbrewery option there, too. So, it's great to see that, that operation kind of resurrected itself. And Brown Bag Burgers has always made really good burgers, so I'm sure they will be very complimentary to both spirits and microbrewed IPAs. So, if we have no other questions or concerns? Councilman Rusing? Councilmember Rusing, do you have a question?
No, I don't, but I'm glad to see a vacancy in that building being occupied.
All right, very good. I'll entertain a motion.
We have to do it as to, Councilman Tenney, yeah. So, we'll need to close the public hearing on the first one and then approve the license, and then same on the second.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Please vote.
And I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 248933 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for Brown Bag Burger, location 130 West Gurley Street.
Second.
A motion in the second. Please vote.
Both of those pass seven zero.
All right, we'll move to item 10B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series Three in-state microbrewery liquor license application from Ian Benjamin Burns, applicant for Brown Bag Burger, location 130 West Gurley Street, number A. The license fees have been paid, and the public notice has been posted for the required 20 days. No public comments have been received.
Very good. Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second. Please vote.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 248929.
Second.
Motion in the second. Please vote.
Both pass seven zero.
All right, we'll now move to the regular agenda item 11A.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. The next item is for a site plan approval and water service application approval. This item has already been through the Water Issue Subcommittee, and I have Tammy DeWitt here from Community Development to give the presentation, as well as we have a few other folks here for needed support if called upon. So, go ahead, Tammy.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tammy DeWitt, community planner. So, this is a, we have the two applications. We have a site plan application. So, this is phase one of a new 12-unit apartment complex, and a future site plan will be submitted for phase two at a later date. This unit one consists of 12 units, 24 bedrooms, and all required parking is on-site. And per the newly-adapted water policy, that if a water service application is required to go through the Water Issue Subcommittee, then a site plan application or other planning project is required. And currently, the property is vacant. So, here's the property. It is zone multifamily high-density, which would allow for the proposed apartment complex as a matter, right? With no additional rezonings or a public comment, public participation. Late in the day. Here's an imagery that shows it is accessed off of Rush Street, not Bradshaw. And in future phase, we'll look at what it will consist of. But right now, the current project is accessed off of Rush Street to the west. And here's what's proposed. It will be two stories with a parking underneath. It is a very difficult lot to develop. There is a lot of slope. So, this will be some interesting engineering coming forward. Here's the site plan. This is for phase one. Phase two will be on the east side of the lot and access off of Bradshaw, but that will happen at a later date, and that would be extensive more engineering required due to the slope and how it's going to be accessed and everything. And we'll have to come back through this process. So, here are the elevations. It does meet our height requirements. And as you can see on the site elevations, it is a pretty slope, steep slope. At the August 1st, 2023 Water Issue Subcommittee, the Water Issue Subcommittee unanimously recommended approval of the project for 1.65 acre-feet per year. And then, the site plan was reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 8th, 2023 meeting, and unanimously recommended approval of the site plan as submitted. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here, and we can answer any questions you may have. This is nowhere near the airport, and yeah.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. This is an infill project. It's in an area where there's a lot of other rentals and certainly is compatible. It is in a flood, a flood area, a flash flood area. And when we were at the Water Issue Subcommittee, a member of the public brought up a question of stormwater drainage. And I was going to ask staff if there was a plan or anything in the works as to how to deal with the runoff from the roofs and the parking area. Because it is in a very narrow sort of a canyon, I guess.
Good afternoon again. So, every site plan or every project when it comes in is reviewed in order to meet the city's drainage criteria manual. That includes detaining water from the site within the site so that the pre- and post-development flows remain the same. If you're familiar with our Penn Eastwood Detention Basin that we just recently, well, we're almost finished constructing it, it's quite something to see if you haven't seen it. It literally is located on the south end of this property. So, the drainage from this site will be metered per our criteria in pre- and post-development at the same rate, which will lead into a small, there's a small drainage swale on the west side, which leads directly into the new Penn Eastwood Detention Basin. So, it would be my assumption, and Tom Terry could probably address this, but it would be my assumption that the city can also consider taking what's called an in lieu of fee from the developer, where they would pay into the detention that is available within the regional detention basin in lieu of constructing it on their site. And given the restraints of their site, I would suggest that that's probably what they will do.
Yeah, because it's kind of hard for the stormwater to flow south uphill from this site.
Would you like to speak to that, Tom? What your plans are, one or the other? They'll either use the regional detention basin, or they'll construct it on their site.
Tom Terry, Distinctive Homes. I did not know that that was available, so I think we would like to take advantage of that.
We'll talk after the meeting. It's the next step in this process, Councilperson Rusing.
And then, I also wanted to stress that the water was only approved for phase one, because I have a lot of concerns about phase two, because it's on the downslope of that Bradshaw Drive, and there's already a big project. It's a very narrow two-lane road with a hairpin turn. There's no guardrails. And we're already going to add a lot of traffic from the hill uphill that's being taken down for a big project. And so, I have a lot of, you know, not everything is buildable. You know, you can't build on everything. But I think phase one is doable. And I was going to ask you, we've never seen the owner, Mr. Tran. Has he seen, has he ever been to Prescott? Does he, has he seen the property?
Yes.
Okay, just...
He's the one who bought it, so.
Oh, well, are we sure he's seen it? Because we get a lot of out-of-state people.
Yes, he was here two weeks ago or so when we met about it, so, yeah.
Okay, all righty. And then, are you going to plan on having a, some structural engineering done by a structural engineer?
It's actually...
For the retaining walls?
It's all done, and yes.
And is it a load-bearing retaining wall?
Yeah, yes. We have retaining walls, and the whole structure was engineered by a structural engineer.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you, and good luck with that project, phase one.
Thank you.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just do have a question about the project itself. I was wondering if it was handicap or ADA accessible, because I was looking at the elevations and looking at the drawings that we received. and looking at the drawings that we received, and it looks like there's going to be long staircases on either end of the project to get up to the apartments, and it didn't look like there was maybe going to be elevators or a way for maybe somebody that's ADA or handicap accessible.
Yes, we have an elevator. We have wheelchair-accessible spaces, elevator, and I believe two units.
Couldn't see that, so I was just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns from the council? Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
All right, then I'll.
Mayor, I move to approve WSA 23-014 as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote.
And Mayor, I move to approve SITE 23-004 per the site plan presented.
Second.
Motion is second, please vote. Very good, we'll move to item 11B now.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for a presentation and some discussion to provide direction to staff regarding the 2023 League of Arizona Towns and Cities Policy Resolutions, and Tyler Goodman, our deputy city manager, is here to give the overview.
Thank you very much, Katie, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here to bring another round of League of Cities resolutions. I'm going to go through a few items. I wanted to give an introduction, just some background on why we do this every year. There are eight resolutions, so my goal is to not completely overwhelm you with a bunch of information, but hit the highlights and get some feedback from you, and then we'll have some direction and even Q and A if you need it. For background, each summer, the League of Cities hosts five resolution committees, and they look at policies that they potentially want to include in the upcoming legislative agenda for the next legislative year. The resolutions are voted on during the annual league conference, which is happening next week. In fact, a week from today is that meeting that the mayor will represent the city and vote on each of these resolutions, as well as the other 90 mayors from the state of Arizona. It's actually quite a site, if you haven't seen it. It's a very large room, and there's a lot of mayors, and there's a lot of good discussion. So as far as an introduction, the purpose of this is to look at big ideas. We're not really getting into nuanced bills. This is not bill language. These, however, if they're approved, the league will take them, work with legislators, craft more specific language, circle back with cities and towns for support or changes or feedback, and then seek eventual passage of a bill. There are, again, five resolution committees. I've put their acronyms here. I won't go through all of them, but that might help you as we go through these. They are referenced throughout the slides, but again, those are the five there, and they cover pretty much everything that you can probably think of somewhere in one of these categories. So the first resolution, the sponsor was Chandler. The summary is to pursue legislation to allow cities and towns to authorize a temporary property reclassification for redevelopment projects that create new housing units. So the gist of this is that if there are underutilized properties such as old shopping centers or malls, cities will then have the ability to temporarily authorize a property reclassification, which would lower the assessment ratio from 10% to 5%, therefore making it more likely to develop into housing units. And I should mention that after each one of these, I'd like to pause and get some feedback. Mayor, I know you are the chair of this particular committee. If you have any comments you want to share, I think that's a good time.
Well, I certainly can speak to BFED or Budget Finance and Economic Development. This is a proposal that came forward from Chandler, because we've got a couple of communities down in the general Phoenix area that are pretty much built out. So vacant land for development is almost nonexistent. And Chandler, Gilbert, Mason, Tempe, these buildout percentages range between 86% and 99%, which means there's virtually no open space to develop housing and residential units, et cetera. So what's left is vacant or very minimally occupied strip malls and other places like that. So trying to be able to get developers to come in and put together a proposal when they have to really demolish the areas and pull out all the large parking structures and parking lots, et cetera, makes it very difficult for those developers to be able to have a reasonable development plan that allows them to put in this extra cost. So the proposal is to, for a period of about seven years, to be able to reduce the assessment on the property taxes from 10% down to 5%, which in essence creates almost a developmentalist incentive for these areas to be redeveloped so that more residential housing development can be created. So I think it's kind of a, quite frankly, a creative way to bring in more residential development, and I think a lot of hopes down there for workforce housing, just like we're looking for options here in the city of Prescott. So I think it's pretty creative, and almost everyone who considered this on the committee found it to be quite a good idea.
Great. All right, with that, I'll move on to the next one, which also came out of the Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee. This came from Camp Verde. This would amend statute to remove the petition requirement that's necessary to form improvement districts. So as a little bit of background, back in 2016, statute was changed, requiring a couple of actual steps that cities would need to take. First, a petition signed by the owners of more than one-half of the taxable property in a proposed district. And then, second, a separate petition signed by more than one-half of the assessed valuation of the properties within that proposed district, and to submit that within 120 days of a council's decision to form an improvement district. These districts, and Camp Verde is really referring to infrastructure, largely these are used for infrastructure, but the proposal is to remove that requirement, and they've cited some specific concerns from their perspective, trying to redevelop or develop areas that are in need of housings especially. They have mentioned, however, as part of this, and I'm not terribly familiar with how this would happen, but again, that's where the language of a bill would be crafted, that property owners within proposed boundaries of an improvement district will still be able to object to their property being included in that district. Again, I'm not sure how that's going to play out or work, but that was something they specifically mentioned in the proposal. But Mayor, again, you were the chair of this and definitely have insight.
Well, I, for one, had some concerns about this, because, you know, Dee Jenkins over at Camp Verde wants to really try to come up with some improvements in their small municipality, and creating one of these municipal improvement districts is a way to do that. However, when you've got some of these really tiny, they're talking about maybe four to six parcels, and all it takes is a majority of the parcel owners or the majority of the value of those parcels to be able to create this. And consequently, you may have a long-term residential owner that's going to be forced into a major assessment, because somebody comes in and buys three parcels out of the four, and now they're a majority of the district. So I'm always reminded of the tyranny of the majority sometimes, where a developer comes in to buy some parcels for his plans, and then you have a long-term residential owner that's going to be assessed a high charge that may cause them to not be able to maintain their facility or their ownership in a property. So that was my concern. If you have a bigger district where you have 50, 60, 80 parcels, then there's more of a, kind of a community ability to debate this and then decide whether you're going to assess yourself the cost, because it will increase the value of the property, no doubt. But I have some concerns about something that is this small. So quite frankly, I'll tell you, I voted against. But there was a majority vote to carry this forward, because in sometimes these very small communities, they're handcuffed in being able to provide additional infrastructure, sewer extensions, and things like that. And without that, their ability to really expand some of those areas are very limited. So it's kind of a borderline for at least this group, but the majority felt it was valuable, and they voted to support it.
Mayor, may I make a comment on that also?
Please.
You know, I looked at both of these, the first one also, and this one. I see a potential for a lot of problems in both of these. You're stripping, in a way, you're stripping the homeowner of their rights, and I'm going to give you an example of that. If we were to go along with this, you know where the Bosa Donuts is? And then you've got that Driggs title, and you've got something else on the corner of Mount Vernon and Gurley? They could potentially go in there against all the people that own homes on Mount Vernon, which you know is an iconic street here, and they could take that strip with little or no fight back, because we are, we're taking away their ability to protect their property values. That's what worries me. So I would, on both of these, I'd like to know, do they have anything in place for situations like that? Because we are really emboldening, you know, the developers, where they would take away a right like that. I mean, we don't want to have maybe 1,000 apartments running along Gurley, you know, starting at Bosa Donuts, that's just an example, because what they do like are these smaller infill properties, where you wouldn't really have much pushback in a normal circumstance like down in Chandler. But up here, if we all have to abide by that, it would be really tying our hands. So I would not support, there has to be some other way or something they can build into both of those that gives a little bit more right back to the neighborhoods in some cases.
So I don't know if we have a consensus here. I think on the first one, would you indicate that you would support that or not? And then the second one, I need the same kind of guidance, because I'm going to be taking this down to that committee and asking for, or presenting a vote of our council.
I would not support those without further consideration made to the homeowner ultimately that would be surrounding some of these areas. So I think there has to be a little bit more consideration to that. So I'm not going to say no to them completely, but no with some modifications.
Councilman Shishka.
Well, this sticky one, Mayor. I really don't have a problem with either one.
Okay. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. On the first one, the Chandler one, it's create new housing units. I'd like to see it say housing units and/or commercial. I don't know why, it's just restricted to housing. And then on this, on the.
The redevelopment of those areas can be done in any manner that the city council is supporting. So it's primarily, most of their concerns is being able to develop housing units, but it doesn't restrict it to that.
Thank you for the clarification. Well, I would be a yes on the Chandler one, and then on the Camp Verde one. I agree, I think I'd be a no on that, because it seems to me that you would be assessing or taxing people against their will. So I'd probably be a no on the municipal improvement districts without a cooperation of the people involved in the district.
If you don't mind, Mayor. Mark Woodfield, Budget and Finance Director. I'm referring to the second resolution, the BFED3 on the improvement districts. This is basically putting it back to the way it was. It was messed up because of some issues in the city of Phoenix, which some would say they had plenty.
2016.
Yeah. This, the wording for BFED3 was actually written by our bond counsel working for Camp Verde, Greenberg, Trowrigg, Michael Cofiso, and Paul Gales there. It really is necessary if you ever want to do an improvement district again. I don't know if you had a water system outside Copper Basin Road that needed to do improvements. You're not going to be able to do it if the statute isn't changed. It really handicaps you. Improvement districts, when presented to the council, are up to the council to whether to proceed with. So there's that check there, Mayor. This doesn't have a developer come in, take them, force the council to form a district. The council always has that option. So I think a lot of your concerns can be resolved with that, that when the Bosa Donuts or that whole thing comes to council, you can say, well, we don't want that. It doesn't, not fair to these people, and it wouldn't be formed. So I think some of these things are self-correcting by who approves the districts.
Well, I think that's generally true in most types of districts. I just think that one in Camp Verde is so small, when you're talking about four to six parcels. Almost every other municipal improvement district has much more size and scope.
It does, but we have not been able to do improvement, well, we, as municipal finance people statewide, have not been able to do improvements districts since the 2016 amendment. So this would allow that to happen in case this council or any water users near us here wanted to do one. It would enable us to do it.
Because of that extra 120-day period?
I'm sorry?
I mean, it requires an extra 120-day period for input.
But it removes the requirement of the petition, which is difficult to get to, you know, the different phases of that. And again, we can, you know, we can get our bond counsel up here to talk in more detail about it. They're obviously more versed than I. What?
I'm certain, Mayor and council members, that we could certainly get a summary of some of these that maybe gives a little more detail. This is a very, this is just a snippet, I think, of the big picture here, but, you know, we certainly can do that. And I think I real quickly wanted to say, Connie, I think to your concern on the first one, again, that's just changing, it doesn't change the homeowner's rights to their home or the zoning for those, and any zoning change for any of those types of things would have to come through as a project for the city, and the city would have the right to say, yeah, it works or it doesn't work. But it doesn't just automatically allow them to get that temporary reduction. It just, if we had a project we really wanted, that would be another tool in our toolbox. That's the only thing it really does.
Yeah, my concern are the properties that adjoin the properties. Even in this case here, it says if changes are enacted, property owners within the proposed boundaries of an improvement district will still be able to object to their property being included in the district. But they can object, it's what's going to happen on the other side of their property line for those who do not object.
Yeah, and again, this was more related to the process in which an improvement district can be, has to follow with the petition versus, obviously, whatever an improvement district is that's going to come in, they're going to have, you know, there's a reason they're going to do that, and there's usually a project associated, and there's still an ability to weigh in on the project itself.
So that begs the question, what's the difference between this and an opportunity zone? Or an enterprise zone, where they also get the tax breaks?
Yeah, an opportunity zone is a little bit different in the sense that that is related to specific census tracts, number one, and number two, it's related to getting a reduction. They have a certain amount of time where they get a, basically a property tax credit associated with this. This wouldn't give them a property tax credit, well, I don't know, maybe over seven years, they get the residential property tax rate versus a commercial, which is normally under a multifamily. If multifamily came in and they were building housing units, they usually fall under more of a commercial rate than a residential rate, so it gives them the ability to have a residential tax bracket, if you will, versus a commercial. So it just gives them a period of time to do that. But to the mayor's point, it could also include, it could be a mixed. But to the mayor's point, it could also include, it could be a mixed-use development, right? It could have commercial as well and all of those types of things, but it just gives them that little bonus when they're trying to determine their long-term costs.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. So based on Mark's comments, which I appreciate, Mark, your clarity that you brought to it, and also the fact that, if I understand what these resolutions are doing, it's to kind of give the league runway to start lobbying, and based on my experience up here, hearing about legislative updates, I'm sure the state legislature will find any number of ways to screw this up by the time it gets to them. So I, you know, I think the gist of these things are more or less something that I, you're seeking a consensus, and they're things that I more or less support in theory, but like I said, I'm certain, I have just unwavering confidence in the state legislature to make a mess of either of these options.
So your comments would be yes and yes?
Yes and yes, with confidence that the state legislature will screw it up.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we're getting bogged down in the weeds, and I think we need to realize that all we're doing is just authorizing the mayor to participate in a resolution that says, yeah, we can start the process to craft some legislation. We're getting way too deep in this subject right now. Are we in favor of it in general? Great, let's move forward. I'm a yes on both.
Councilman Tenny?
Take exactly Councilman Moore's words and with more emotional emphasis.
I have my directive on those two.
All right, I will move on to number three. This came from Scottsdale. This would amend statute to allow for the collection of 10% more than the minimum signature threshold for local candidates. So a little more background, this would expand the state's equal system so that candidates could have a little more runway, so to speak, so that they're not hitting just the minimum. And if signatures have to be tossed out for whatever reason, then they're in a bind, so to speak. So this would allow for that to occur at 10% more than the minimum threshold would be built into that system. All right, I don't hear any major concerns. Can I move on to the next one? All right. This came from Tempe. This would be to enable the league to support legislative resolutions to ratify the Equal Rights Amendment. I have to be honest, I had to go back and do, I wasn't alive in the 70s, if you didn't guess that. So I had to go back and do my research, but here it is. In 1972, Congress approved, submitted the amendment to state legislatures. This, of course, proposed a guarantee that constitutional legal rights cannot be denied or abridged based on sex. It required that 38 states ratify it by 1979, but it just received 35. Congress then extended it to 1982, but no further states ratified the amendment at that point, and actually, five states revoked the ratifications. This is coming up. Apparently, Illinois, Nevada, and Virginia have recently expressed support to ratify it. So they are seeking direction that would give the league some latitude to support something like this.
Councilman Moore?
Excuse my ignorance, Tyler, but is Arizona one of the 38 states or one of the 12?
One of the 12.
So they're seeking guidance to maybe join the ratification effort?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Well, keep in mind that the ratification process under the Constitution has expired. So for this to be a legitimate claim, it would have to start all over again from the Congress and then go back to the states. So I think, you know, I think this whole effort is pretty much a moot point at this time. So what do you guys think? Can tell me? Yes or no? Shishka?
Just say yes or no.
Just say yes or no.
Yes.
I agree with you, Mayor.
I'm a no.
No.
I'm a no, I think it's a moot point. You know, I'm really struggling with this one, but I think in my heart of hearts, it's a no. I'm kidding. It seems, it's so obviously moot, like it's absurd that this is even a thing.
Tenny?
I think it's outside the purview of what the league has typically asked us to support and what they have typically supported on behalf. I'm a no.
Very good. All right. To NSQL 3.
Yes, and I combine these three into one because they all came from the same sponsor, Scottsdale, and they all deal with short-term rentals. So first, the first one, number three, I guess you could say, would set caps on the total number of short-term rentals. The next would limit density of short-term rentals in specified areas, and the third would establish distance requirements between short-term rentals. I mean, they're, they're basically trying to cover the boxes here of allowing cities to have more latitude to regulate short-term rentals, focus on affordability of housing, the makeup of neighborhoods, all those things that we've talked about really since 2016, when legislation changed that.
Mayor Protam Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I have a question about the legal viability of this, I guess is my question, or the legal. I mean, I guess if it's a law, it's a law, but, I mean, is there constitutional concerns?
I think that comes down to the details of it, but in concept, no. I mean, I think right now, it's just, and I have opinions that I don't share, but I'll say that generally speaking, as a city attorney, anything that brings authority to the local level as opposed to the state level is a good thing. So that's what this does, in my opinion.
Councilmember Rusing?
I'm a yes on all three, and unfortunately, none of these things can be applied to our rehab homes because they're protected under federal law is under the Americans with Disability Act.
Yeah, you have a protected class involved, but I think when the state legislature tied the hand of all the municipalities to be able to regulate some of these short-term rentals, it just created absolute chaos. I know Sedona has a hell of a problem with it, and so does the city of Page. They can't even find places for their local members of their staff in their cities to even find a place to live. All the available rentals have been turned into short-term rentals, and it's become another example of the legislature taking away local control. So I think this is a way to kind of reel that back in and rely, and have some local control over a lot of unintended consequences, right?
All right, very good. And last but not least, this is another kind of softball, I would say. This came from Mesa. This would amend statute to allow cities and towns to use body scanning machines in jails and holding facilities. It wasn't purposefully left out of previous legislation, but currently, statute only authorizes the Department of Corrections and county jails to use these types of machines. This would simply allow for cities to implement using the body scanning machines if they desire.
All right, I'll uphold you all on this one. Councilwoman can't tell me?
Yes.
Councilman Shishka?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Rusing?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Montoya?
Yes, if it's good enough for TSA, it's good enough for people in prison.
Councilman Tenny?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that was an easy one, too.
All right, and unless there's any other questions, that is all I have.
Well, thank you all. I have city council's recommendation. I'll present that at the league. Concludes our agenda today. And I'll close this meeting with another quote from our founding fathers, one of our founding fathers. "A nation of well-informed men and women who have been taught to know and prize the rights which God has given them cannot be enslaved. It's in the region of ignorance that tyranny begins." Benjamin Franklin. This meeting is adjourned.